Welcome. January 3, 6:30 Lowell School Committee Meeting. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Command, clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Ms. Lay? Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke?
Here.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Five present, two absent.
On to the minutes. Need a motion to approve the regularly scheduled special meeting minutes to Lowell School Committee on December 6, December 11, and December 13, 2023, and place it on file. Motion by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. 3.1, we took care of that. 2, 3. 4, permission to enter. Need a motion to approve the permission to enter by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call, please.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay? Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Five yeas, two absent.
Memorials. Mr. Conway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add Claudette Bojolay. She was an extremely well-respected teacher at Lowell High School, taught French for more than 30 years. So if we get out her, that. Thank you.
Also, we have Jeffrey Matthew King Jr., brother of John Overton, Lowell Public Schools Central Office. We'll lower the lights now and do a moment of silence. May he rest in peace. Next up, motions. Motion 6.1 by Jackie Dougherty requests superintendent provide a committee with a report that includes current data on chronic absenteeism and create recovery and credit recovery as well as an update on the efforts to support student attendance and improve graduation rates. The report should include new actions, policies to address these issues and their impact, as well as identity barriers either in practice or in policy that continue to adversely impact student engagement, attendance, and graduation rates, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I apologize for the length of the motion. I wanted to be very clear. We, the former school committee, had added a number of positions and made some policy changes around what has become, you know, concerning absentee, chronic absenteeism and dropout rate, you know, our graduation rate. So I'm looking for kind of a, what have we seen so far in terms of the impact? And really, it's up to the superintendent if you want to wait until, I know the numbers are not required to the state yet, maybe for another month or two from last year. Or it just, I want the most current information, so if that takes another month, that's fine. But I'm mostly interested in, you know, the impacts of the new staff and policies and if there are other impediments, other things that we should be doing, that we're not doing, and especially looking for consistency across the district, but also between the houses at the high school, to make sure that we're doing all we can to keep our students engaged. So that was the intent. Thank you.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Dougherty, the motion is very welcome. The specificity and length of it is also welcome because it guides us into what exactly to respond to. There are some new staff, and I think it's helpful that we be accountable for how they're working and the impact that they're having. And so we will be, the other comment I had was that we keep track of chronic absenteeism continuously. So even if it's reported to the state periodically, we don't gather it up at that time. We keep record of it continuously, and so we don't need to wait to produce the report.
I could just add, that makes me think of, even with the, because I know the graduation rates have really dropped significantly, as many districts have experienced through COVID. My sense is our recovery is not as good as some of the other districts. And I guess I'm looking for, if you have data, if you're looking at students on track to graduate or needing some kind of, you know, credit recovery or whatever, if that could be included, I don't, that would be welcome to. Just looking for as much information as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Conway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate Ms. Dougherty on this motion. I think it's extremely important. Because when you're talking about the chronic absenteeism, and that's something that staff often complains about, and I think it's very, very important that we constantly do an update on how we handle that. And sometimes it can be in a reward basis instead of punitive, and I think that's something that we should take a good look at. Because I think that, you know, when you talk about attendance, it affects all aspects of education. It's extremely important, because let's face it, if you don't have, you don't have that student sitting in that seat, and you don't have good discipline, proper discipline, education isn't going to take place. So I congratulate Ms. Dougherty on that, on that motion.
Mr. Bahu?
Ms. Dougherty, great motion. I think it's important if we see more students in the classrooms, then we will see a higher graduation rate. I'm curious, you know, being new here, how many truant officers does Lowell currently have? I think that's pretty important, because I know at grade Lowell, we have, whenever we see a student out of school for more than three or four days successively, we'll send over a truant officer to their home and say, hey, you know, is Joe or Mike okay? They haven't been coming to school. Are you aware of that? Is there something that we could do? So I think that's important. And then, of course, the credit recovery piece is very important as well for the kids that do, you know, miss school regularly, might be due to illness, it may be due to not wanting to come or English barriers. But the recovery, the credit recovery is vital as well, simply because it will help us progress kids forward.
Ms. Conway, go ahead.
Are we done on this here?
I think the superintendent wants to press.
Oh, all right. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Bahu raised a couple of questions. I'd like to, you asked how many truancy officers we have. So we don't have any truancy officers, but it's more that we don't use that title so much. We have attendance monitors, and we have three of those. We have a director of the attendance office. So the sort of the thinking around that has evolved to the point where we know that many of the chronic absentee cases are not what we traditionally consider to be truant. You know, get out to the house, rattle them out of bed, and get them into school. It's not that, oftentimes it's not that. It's more to do with other issues, mental health issues oftentimes. And so we sometimes use the term school refusal rather than truancy. We'll include some more of this information in the report.
Sure, and I thank you for that. But I think the attendance monitors who may leave the building and visit a school or visit a student, it may be beneficial to try to get the students to attend school. I don't want to go back and forth on this, but I think that it's something that works really well over at grade Lowell, and it may be something that could improve attendance right here, you know, in the Lowell Public School District.
Agreed. Thank you.
And the other one, 6.1, Ms. Del Rossi?
So I guess I wanted to make a motion that kind of spun off of this one, because it is related to absenteeism, but especially for our students with specific learning disabilities. If they're chronically absent, they should be taken off IEPs for their specific learning disability. So I kind of want to put a motion on, or ask the maker of the motion for a friendly amendment, to ask if they can report on the relation to specific learning disabilities in kids who are chronically absent, and assuring that these kids aren't going to be getting services if they're chronically absent. Because there's nothing wrong with their achievement level, their aptitude levels. It's that they need to catch up in school, and they're not being able to catch up in school if they're absent. And many kids have been taken off IEPs, I know in my district, due to chronic absenteeism and a specific learning disability. I know that's a long.
Mr. Superintendent?
If it helps, I can offer, on the motion we have as written, to include disaggregated data in there, so that when we report out, we'll give it to you by different categories, including special ed.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Both. Motion passes. Mr. Conway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask for a suspension of the rules for the purpose of submitting a motion, dealing with the pest control in our schools and bringing this motion forward tonight, I think is important, rather than waiting another two weeks here. Because I've received a number of telephone calls in regards to the, what is going on in the schools, and I think it, that's why I'd like to bring a motion forward.
Motion by, Mr. Conway, motion forward, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Mr. Conway?
Yes, the motion being, request the superintendent to direct the appropriate department for a report on the sign-in logs from each school with the dates and the results that were recorded from each pest control visit for the last five years. Also, include the list of each pest control company, along with the length of contract and the total monies that have been paid for the last five years. And I think that we need to take a look at, we need to take a look at the bigger picture and what is going on there, because you know, when you're, and just very briefly on that motion, the lack of cleanliness and the pest control problems is, is most, is actually in most of our schools. That's what the Board of Health was talking about. So I think our students, staff, and families, and the city certainly deserve better. So I look forward to the report and the recommendations, Mr. Superintendent, to rectify this particular problem. Thank you.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Reports to the superintendent, 7.1 of a personnel report, and 7.2 is the certification of product or services received. Any comments on either one before I go to the superintendent? Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't feel it need to comment, other than perhaps if there are questions that consider them as reports of motion, excuse me, reports of progress and take them as they are. Thank you.
Motion to accept by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Bahu. All those in favor?
Good idea.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just have a question on the transportation manager. Because of the effective of his resignation, was December 31, and that caught us in a surprise. So question to the, through you, to the superintendent, how would that play out in our school? If our transportation manager is leaving in such a haste like this?
Superintendent?
Thank you. The first part of the answer, Mr. Lay, is that it's being treated as most any other vacancy. We've posted the position, and we're seeking applicants for the job. We also have some contingency plans if we're not able to attract a successful candidate. There's also, it happens, in the next part of our agenda, there's a PDF, a document in there with seeking your approval for temporary relief by being able to pay a stipend for part-time work. And I can refer to Dr. Hall, who's able to provide more information if you'd like.
May I ask a following question? So wouldn't there be like a timeframe, like so, he has to give us so, such many weeks of warning before he could resign?
I think that, thank you. I think that this is a particular case where that may or may not be possible, given that the individual has also joined the city council. And so if you don't mind, Mr. Lay, I think for a more accurate rendition of my response, let me turn it over to Dr. Hall, please. Dr. Hall?
Mr. Lay, on how this proceeded, once we got the notification from Mr. Dakota, given the uniqueness of his position with his permission, I called the Attorney General's office to see what sort of flexibility we would have in using Mr. Dakota for consulting or assisting if we weren't able to fill the position quickly enough. We also did post the position. Do have a number of candidates. Some interviews are pending. But you may have noticed, based on what the Attorney General's office told me, we then sent a communication to City Hall, which ultimately resulted in, I believe, last night, the city council voting to allow Mr. Dakota to work in a limited capacity with the school department. Should his services be necessary, part of that procedure required the superintendent to certify that there wasn't a present employee with Mr. Dakota's particular skill set that could do his old job. And additionally, the city council had to vote to authorize it, and his work would be limited to 500 hours in this capacity if he was a city councillor. So we followed all those directions from the Attorney General's office, and the city council also voted. And now, before you, in the next agenda item, is a potential short-term solution to get us through this while we go through the posting process and the interview process.
Mr. Lay?
So just for curious, when did we receive, just because I didn't know, this is very surprise, until just heard recently, when did he actually give notice?
I don't have the, I do have it in my notes, which I could look up on my computer, but approximately the first or second week of December. And then I had called the state right after that, and then we posted the job, I think, the day after that conversation.
Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I understand it's unusual circumstance. I just think, in general, we don't want to be having retirees working, I mean, we have a Title I position that I think has been covered by a retiree for two years. I mean, the goal is we get somebody in as soon as possible, right? And it has already been posted for the transportation position?
Yes.
So we're going to be getting applicants and all that. And I understand, I mean, it'd be good to have some transition time. It's a very important role in the schools. But I was surprised when I saw that, because it's like, I don't want to get into this habit of retirees leaving and then coming back with these consultant salaries when we need full-time people committed to the job full-time. And I'm assuming the Title I position, we're currently posting and trying to get somebody in full-time for that?
The committee has not yet decided on that. We've discussed it previously. It's not come on the floor, and so it will be something I think we can take up in budget season.
Okay.
In terms of like, if we want to use our funds that way.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rossi?
Yes. I'll address some other of my points on 8.1, but in terms of the position being posted, I'm just curious as to where it's posted, because I didn't see it anywhere.
It's on our posting platform on Power School. We can, I can forward that to you. I think on, the posting ran through, believe it or not, on December 29. So we're in the review and interview process and the next.
And just, so we're also clear, last night at the city council meeting, Councilor Janess just, I think he asked the city council to get documented in writing for the state ethics, because this does get messy. It gets very messy. Remember when I called you after Dr. Boyd retired and asked if I could be the interim superintendent? And you said, I need a cooling off period for how long before I come back? So, and with a retiree, it gets even more messy. So I, this is going to get complicated. So I think we should definitely wait for everything to be certified and we have an appropriate documentation.
So I'd just like to, you know, stress for the record, again, Mr. Dakota is, I think, one of our best employees. Not that I want to talk about personnel matters, but since he's retired, he was a great credit to the transportation department. I'm confident he saved the school department and the city countless hours and a lot of money. We went through numerous procedures, which, you know, involved me calling the Attorney General's office numerous occasions. Also, the city solicitor by law is the ethics officer for the city who can make these opinions, but his research also confirmed what the Attorney General's office told me. I took copious notes, sent them over to the city HR director immediately due to the interplay of the positions, and the AG's office gave us a roadmap to follow, which we did, exactly as they told us.
And I guess I'm saying, just, can we see something in writing? Just so everyone has sound minds over this. Thank you.
Mr. Bahu?
The only question I have about this is the 500 hours that Mr. Dakota can work. There's about 20 weeks left of school, and calculated 40 hours a week. I know we were looking to onboard someone probably within eight or 10 weeks. That might gobble up 400 hours. I'm not sure how much training that he could do, you know, for that period of time. Is there someone else that can help with the training of the newest transportation director?
Yes, yeah, we do have two. We just plus up the transportation office. There used to be one administrative assistant in there. We now have two Level 6A administrative assistants in there that are extremely skilled. So they are working in there, and they've worked closely with Mr. Dakota for several years. So we are, we just plus up in that area, potentially anticipating that John Dakota might not be there forever. And additionally, we hope to get someone who's skilled, who John can consult with and help train within the next two weeks as well. There's no guarantee on who will apply, obviously, but we're hopeful we'll get some candidates or be able to use Mr. Dakota within the parameters of the law to get us through the remainder of the school year.
Is there such a thing as an interim transportation director that we may be able to use and resource for a period of time and to see if that works out well, and possibly give that person the full-time position if they're effective?
Sure. So if the position posting fails, we'd be authorized to hire someone on an interim basis while we repost it or, you know, did a larger search, so that is a possibility.
Thank you.
Conway?
Yes, thank you through you to Dr. Hall, to get that hard copy from the, from Boston. How long would it take? I mean, I know that we've got, we've got a verification by phone, but how long, how long does it usually take for something like that? Is that a week?
10 days to two weeks.
Okay, all right. And one other thing, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the superintendent, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you on that, on the Title I. When, when is that coming up, that Title I job, full-time?
Thank you. So we have, at the moment, the central office a part-time Title I position. The previous superintendent, actually, two superintendents ago, Dr. Klevawi, was the one who arranged for that setup. So it's been questioned recently by school committee members, and we've agreed to take a look at that, and that, but I think the time to do that would be at budget time. We don't know, for example, there's no funds set aside right now to hire a full-time Title I director from the Title I funds that we have at the moment. We can make that arrangement, for sure, but I think the proper time to do it would be when we're planning for next year's school budget.
Okay, and when would you, when would that be now? What, can you give me a timeline on that?
Well, typically, the school committee will approve the budget in May or early June. So we, in other words, we, whatever the school committee decides you'd like to happen, we would arrange for it to be in place over the summer and on, from then on.
And what about advertising? Is that, does that give you enough of time during, yeah?
Certainly. It, may I also say, if the school committee would like it to be arranged and decided sooner, I will follow your direction, for sure.
All right. So in other words, a motion, if you bring a motion forward on that, we'll?
Yes, and, or if it's worthy of further discussion, you're welcome to arrange for a personnel subcommittee meeting to have that discussion, but I will follow your lead on it, whichever way you choose to go.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Ms. Dougherty? All those, great. No more comments. We move on to 7.2, certification of product and services received. Comments? Good, great. The motion to accept the reports to the superintendent, 7.1, 7.2, was a report of progress by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor? Passes, motion approved. 7.3, home education. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Lay. All those approve. Motion passes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Mia Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent.
Next section, 8.1, approval of new job descriptions. Mr. Rossi?
I do have a concern in terms of what we were just talking about in the personnel report. I asked in a motion on October 18th if we could put some proactive plan together to assure that when the transportation director did leave, that we had a plan in place. Because transportation in the city has been tough, and I didn't want to be left in the lurch in this situation. I have to find all these hoops to go through. I was told by interim superintendent Skinner that they already have a proactive plan. Someone's already shadowing Councilor Dakota in order to do their job. So I'm curious, is that true? Or did something happen between October 18th and now? Because I was Because I was reassured, you had reassured me that that was all set.
Thank you, Mr. Rossi. I can confirm that what we said in October is what happened, and what I've indicated at the time was that there were a couple of parts to it. One, I believe there was a desire to post the position sooner, and we simply can't post a position when someone hasn't announced their retirement. Despite we might want to, we're not allowed to, we can't do that to somebody who's in a job who hasn't retired yet. So we definitely had to wait to get notice of the retirement before we posted it. And the second part was that I assured you that we had contingency plans if we were in any difficulty, and we do. We've had those plans since that time. They involve other people at central office who can fill in that role. It's also part of the contingency to have Mr. Dakota be available on contract to assist those folks.
What's that? Mr. Doherty?
Thank you. Just, the first thing is just a housekeeping thing, and I think especially where we have, well, not Mr. Conway, because he's been on this, he's not new to this rodeo, but where we have new member. With job descriptions, you say, the way to put it in the agenda is to actually say the position, so each one is approval of the, permission to post behavior specialist and new job description or whatever, so it's specific. That's just a housekeeping thing. The other thing about the new job descriptions is at our last meeting, we asked that we, and it's in the minutes, I don't know if you guys bothered to read the minutes, but it's in the minutes under Subcommittee. At our last meeting in December, we said we were going to table some of these new positions until Ms. Martin could report out on the Personnel Subcommittee meeting. It's not on the agenda, the Personnel Subcommittee, but Ms. Martin's absent, but I did speak with her today, and she asked, she doesn't want to report out, because the Personnel Subcommittee met about some of these positions. I did not attend that meeting, but I have, personally, have some concerns. So just to kind of wind back to what Mr. Conway said about the Title I position, and the superintendent is correct, we don't have current money budgeted for that position because we've been doing the consultant part-time thing. But we do have money that was set aside in the suspense account during the budget process last year for one of these new positions, the Assistant Family Resource Center, no, I think it's the Coordinator, Assistant Coordinator position. So in this long-winded way, I would just ask that we discuss those positions in the format that we had agreed, which was, the Personnel Subcommittee gets to report out on it, and then we have a full discussion, because I personally am not going to support another management kind of position, a coordinator-level position for the Family Resource Center. I think that money could be better spent for a full-time Title I person, which is what we always had. We manage millions of millions of dollars in Title I. So that's, I think we should delay that and in the next meeting have it on the agenda to report out on that Personnel Subcommittee meeting, and then have the positions posted by position. That's just what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Mr. Rossi?
I'm sorry, I just want to make one last comment. So on December 28th, it was, we got the memo. The memo was dated to have posted the position, the Director of Transportation recently submitted his retirement. We have posted the position to seek a new transportation director. But then again, the retirement date is listed as December 31st, yet you'll see on the next permission to post a job, behavior specialist is retiring in, on January 31st, 2024, and yet we already have the permission to post that coming to the school committee tonight, a month early. And I worked at the blink, I know how important a behavior specialist is, but I would have to say, right now in the city, a transportation director is more important. Thank you.
So, Ms. Doherty, is there a motion to delay?
Yes, I'm sorry about that long-winded, I would make a motion to table those and include the minutes from the Personnel Subcommittee meeting on the next agenda with the positions to post.
So all three on 8.1?
Yes.
Is there a second? By Mr. Conway, roll call?
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent.
8.2, position, Mr. Superintendent?
I understood the notes on producing the draft of descriptions and report that the personnel subcommittee is required to discuss. I have one, I have one. That's the one. You just go over. I'm very sorry. I understood the comments about the job descriptions and what you're seeking, including notes from the Personnel Subcommittee being discussed first. I've got that. On 8.1, there's also this, the final item, approval of position for temporary contract. That's the one we discussed about the 500 hours for Mr. Dakota to advise. May we do that, please? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I see it.
Thank you.
Right. I have...
I know, is I missing?
Okay. So, Mr., what are we looking to do, just like, I don't see what you're talking about?
I'm now, I'm going to steal another march, if I may. There's two. So under 8.1, we've agreed to table the job descriptions and discussion, but there are two items in addition. One says salary parameters, and the other says approval of position. So the approval of position is the Mr. Dakota one. We think we're clear on that.
And just to my housekeeping point, if there is clarity in each item, it makes it, it's easier for us to follow, it's easier for the public.
Understood.
And the salary parameters, that's the one regarding the new, the posting for Director of Special Education.
That's correct.
So that one, I think, also has a timely factor. How long do we have our current special education director?
I believe one more week or so.
Right.
So the, our current Director of Special Ed has, in terms of his career, he's had, you can be congratulated on finding a new position in Boston, an important position, and we sort of congratulate him on leaving to that role. We have, because he's leaving, we've posted for his job, and we're seeking applicants for a new Director of Special Education. The item marked salary parameters is seeking your permission to up the salary by $10,000 to $15,000, simply because it's very difficult to attract people. We have, and can share with you if you need to see it, salary ranges from other districts for that position. It's very difficult to find candidates, and so that's what that item, salary parameters, is about.
So if we're okay with that, do you understand what we've just done?
I do, but it's on the agenda, right?
Well, the agenda, 8.1 has three pieces to it, and my piece to table was only the first part. The last two pieces, which again, it speaks to having a very clear agenda with, okay. So the last two items have a time factor that, if I'm understanding the superintendent, if we could vote on those two...
So we just read a motion to defer all three, so we want to take that back, correct?
Right, so the motion would...
No, no, she wants to defer all three. She's saying these are in addition to.
Those are separate issues than what I asked to defer. So it wasn't, the wording was to defer all of 8.1, but we're really just talking about deferring the first part of 8.1.
Okay.
So I don't know, do we have to do a new motion, Mary? How do you want, I'm sorry.
Is the body okay with that?
With just making that adjustment without, we understand. Okay.
Sure.
And I, and I think it's just...
Oh, yeah, semantics.
Okay. So if we can talk about the salary parameters, that's the next one, right?
Yes.
Okay, because I did have a question about that.
Go ahead.
Or maybe it's a concern. I'm going to put it this way, as a concern. It's very important to me that we hire a special education director that knows Massachusetts laws, Massachusetts special education laws. And the current special ed director was one of our own. And I do agree with the superintendent to applaud Mr. Vincenzi on his promotion and moving into a higher role. He has provided us with great service. But the one before that was brought in from, he did not, so I noticed in the job description that it says eligibility, and I understand why you want to keep that, eligibility to be certified, but I just want to go on record as saying, we really need somebody who knows Massachusetts special education laws. You don't walk into this state in that kind of a job without having that under your belt, and I would just want to emphasize that. And I am in favor of increasing the salary. I want the best, most experienced special education director that we can possibly get for our kids, so I would make that in a form of a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation regarding salary.
Thank you very much, Ms. Doherty. May it be clear, if you please, about the level to which we can increase the salary, right? So there's a proposal, one proposal in the document says to, for at least to 145, from 135 to 145 at least, but owing the possibility that you may choose to allow us to increase it even further to 155. And that's not outside the bounds of what Directors of Education are being paid in Massachusetts, but we wanted to say, at least 145 to attract good candidates, if you agree to, and we're not looking to pay it so much as have a range, right? And we'll take your guidance on that.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is to allow us to post it as between, say, 140 and 155, and just have that range available if we find a really qualified candidate, but then, and they're the only one in the pool.
So we have motion by Mr. Doherty, is there a second? Is there a second? By Mr. Conway? Comments? Mr. Rossi?
Mayor through you to Dr. Hall. Can I be interim superintendent? No, just kidding. No, I just want to know, actually, did Dr. Vicente do an exit interview? And I just think that that's important in keeping retention going forward, because I think we need to retain employees in the city more than anything, and that's important. So thank you.
Mr. Lay?
Wait, you can get to answer a question.
I thought it was rhetorical, but...
Dr. Vicente will have an exit interview, for sure. When I say that, I want to be clear, he will be offered one. The person actually doesn't have to accept. I anticipate he'll willingly accept, but he'll be offered an exit interview.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to our HR director. Do you know how much Dr. Vicente is salivating right now?
How much he's going to make in his next...
No, how much he is currently salivating right now.
It's below the range right now. I don't have the exact amount, but it's certainly not 155.
So if we, okay.
This increase still, my belief, and I don't have exact personal knowledge, won't come close to making what he'll make in his next position.
Is he currently a, somewhere around 135 level?
Dr., or Mr. Lay, excuse me, I believe he's making roughly 120.
Okay, thank you. So if we increase it to all the way to 155, that's like, very large.
Understood, understood. So without complicating it too much, we are also having a review of central office functioning with this company called Public Works. We do not have a report from them as yet, but they've indicated that they want to make recommendations in this area, that we don't, this is an email conversation I had just today, so I don't have the information shared, but they have picked up, in other words, on the fact that our Title I, or, excuse me, our Director of Special Education is a lower-level position than in many other districts. In some districts, it's a cabinet-level position. The special ed director would be at every school committee meeting, right? And so we're not asking for that today. You may guide us in that, and you may see the Public Works report and choose to go in a different direction beyond what we're saying tonight. Tonight, we're simply asking for the ability to seek somebody of the kind of caliber that we think will be looking for a higher salary. Ms. Turner's offering me a clarification that Dr. Vicente, right now, is being paid 142. So excuse me a little.
It's in the budget at 142, so if it's already approved, that's cost 142.
Okay, so a motion on the floor by Ms. Doherty, or seconded by Mr. Conway, roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bahu, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just one quick comment. To find a quality special education teacher in a district this size is not an easy task. I believe 20% of our students are special education, and with a 14,000 student district, we're looking at close to 4,000, or even, yeah, 4,000 students. With that being the case, that salary range of 145 to, or 140 to 155, I think, is something that we should definitely be moving forward with.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one absent.
So Superintendent, next up, you have the presentation.
Thank you. So there's the, the final part of 8.1 is this document that asks for your permission that we can avail of Mr. Dakota's services up to 500 hours.
A motion? Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Lay?
Just a question.
Go ahead.
Now, is there a time limit on this? Is this just a, until the end of the year, or is this forever? 500 hours per year for, until June 31st, or 500 hours until forever, until whenever he decides to leave?
On the document that indicates a year, you're welcome to suggest or demand a specific deadline. For example, if you wish to say, from now until the end of this calendar year, we'd be happy to do that. We simply want to be, have an option to provide a temporary person with additional support, Mr. Dakota's expertise. But you're welcome to set a limit on that. If you set a limit of a calendar year, for example, it gives us lots of time to, you know, to be in a position where we don't need his services, and at the same time, give us an opportunity, if we were unsuccessful with that, to come back and explain ourselves and have to seek additional approval beyond that time if we were necessary. So I think a deadline of the end of the calendar year is my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. I will accept, I will do that.
Motion by Councilor Lay, it's a deadline, seconded by Ms. Doherty, Mr. Rossi.
Is he still coming to work every day? Right now?
Dr. Hall?
He's not authorized to be paid for work until we go through the procedures that were given to him.
All right, thank you.
A point of clarification, Superintendent, the end of the fiscal year or the calendar year?
I was suggesting, I believe, the end of the calendar year, so roughly, you're giving us close to a calendar year, 2024.
Thank you.
If I could provide further guidance on that from my discussion with the AG's office, so the law limits how many hours he can work in a calendar year, so I'd request that you just approve it as written. We may need him to perform more of those hours by June 30th, and the school committee already has a protection within there where you guys approve the budget for each year. So for example, if you didn't budget this position for the next fiscal year, there's an automatic protection in there. This will give us more flexibility, given the experience of the candidates we get in the posting, and again, we're just going through all these procedures to try to continue our transportation services the best that we can.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just a question, Dr. Hall, if, so if we have him, his service for the whole calendar year, if so, are we in the, have any reason to hire somebody permanent?
Well, I mean, the issue, Mr. Lay, is Mr. Dakota certainly is, I would say, in the, you know, top echelon of transportation, school transportation experts, so we would want him anyway as a consultant, because his services certainly... anyway as a consultant because his services certainly save us money and his analysis and expertise. The issue is, I don't think right now, if you set like a certain number of hourage, you're potentially going into the next budget year. That's why I'm just trying to be extra careful in saying, you know, you're approving him to work 500 hours, which is sanctioned by state law. I don't know if any additional parameters need to be set just because the law would control how much he can work.
Ms. Arti?
First, I want to say this has nothing to do with the particular employee. I've known him for years. I think he's done excellent work. When I first met him, he was running the Family Resource Center and Transportation. But my concern, as I said from the beginning, was we, this is a bad precedent. It's not the way to do business. You know, that Title One position was a crucial position. And although, under two superintendents, it became this part-time gig because we had no money, then we did have money for four years. And it continued to be a part-time position that are a consultant, retiree consultant. So I have concerns that, as my colleague to the left said, what's the motivation to get the best transportation director who is not retired to come to Lowell and do the very important work of transportation? That's why when Mr. Lay brought up his motion about timeline, I really thought he was talking the end of the school year. And then if we're at a position and there should be some very good reasons why we can't find a transportation director in the next six months, we will at least have this conversation, which that didn't happen with the Title One director. That position languished as a part-time position for a retiree for over two years. So that's my concern with the timeline. I thought, and I seconded Mr. Lay's motion about, let's give him six months, give six months to find somebody good. If we want to extend it, we, I mean, I guess we can't then, or?
Right. So the problem, Ms. Arti, and I didn't, you know, suggest, I know the committee has been very supportive of Mr. Dakota and Transportation. So I didn't sense that this was a limitation on, you know, what he's done. But if we need him for the 500 hours while we're transitioning with a new person, he's going to be limited by state law from working in the next school year. That's why I think that parameter issue is kind of moot. The committee retains jurisdiction over whether or not this position is.
But you're also, if I could just finish my point, Dr. Hall, you're also saying 500 hours spread over a year. As my colleague, Mr. Bahu, pointed out in the beginning of the conversation, 500 hours is about three months, right? If you're working a 40-hour week. Are we going to then say that the transportation director can adequately be done as a 20-hour-a-week position or a 15-hour-a-week position? Because that is not true. We have had so many challenges around transportation that have nothing to do with him. I realize that. But he's been putting out fires since pre-COVID. It's, so I don't know how it benefits us to spread the 500 hours. You have a whole year to work these 500 hours. So.
Ms. Arti, if I may, please, I want to offer, I think we're, there's a couple of different arguments that are being confused. One, I think, is Dr. Hall as being very careful in how he wrote the memo to meet the law. And so I've picked up on that. And the second is that the committee clearly is concerned about the idea that this could be an ongoing situation. So my proposal is, if you, if you agree that we should have access to Mr. Dakota temporarily, that we approve this memo, but put a limit on it to the remainder of this school year. That if we want him, if we feel strongly that he's needed beyond this school year, we should come back to you and tell you why we need that, right? And so if, oh, well, it was, but you asked for clarification on, and I had been speaking about the calendar year. I'm happy to change that to school year if that's how you'd like it to be. But the proposal I'm suggesting is that let's give this approval, if you please, but limit it to the school year unless we come back to you.
If I may quickly from up, from up here, you know, following it a little bit, I think that the problem we run into is the next school year, we're getting bus routes in effect for the calendar 24, 25 school year. And if Mr. Dakota's agreed upon in his room, is very helpful in that area. If he's not around come the summertime to get the routes ready for us to fall, that can be disaster for, for the city. So that's, that's my only suggestion is to, to vote on it as is and to let, you know, Dr. Hall and Mr. Dakota, the superintendent, deal with that. If for some reason that come back to us, we'll deal with it then. But I think we're really flirting with, with disaster come, come September if he's not there. I would vote on it as, as is written.
You wanted to go for the full calendar year?
Yes, please. I think it just makes sense.
I think that's a good point.
Yes, right.
My, my, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Last.
The, what I've also found missing here is the rate. So we are only approving the hours, but we don't know how much we're going to pay him. So how, how would that play out?
Superintendent?
Dr. Hall?
So it would be a subject of negotiation, Mr. Lay. My understanding from limited research on this is that consultants in this area are paid anywhere between $100 to $200 an hour.
Again, if I may, just, you know, we went through this on the council side, not having a traffic engineer for a number of months, as Mr. Conway knows about. And the consultant rates were astronomically high, you know, compared to what we could deal with here in the city. So, you know, you can take some more comments, but I think the points have been made and, you know, hopefully get ready to vote. But Mr. Rossi, go ahead.
This is my last comment, but I don't like this process at all, especially having a motion in, on, in October in regards to it and trying to be proactive. But I sit here and my mind goes, I'm going to vote no. And I sit here thinking, I have a child in this district. I have to reactivate his transportation soon, this week. And I have to go through those processes. And my first thing, my first message was to call Mr. Dakota. So I don't want to do that to parents in the district. I don't want to leave parents in this district in a lurch. We essentially need him. I don't like the process, but thank you.
So Mr. Lay, what do you want to do?
So knowing that if he get paid $200 an hour for 500, that's equivalent to $100,000 of salary on top of, of the retirement. I feel that it's, it's a little bit, it's pretty much, it feels like he didn't even retire, work less for more money, I suppose.
Respectfully, I'm not sure. Motion on the floor.
For me.
To the hours.
For me, you know, knowing, knowing how knowledgeable Dr. Hall is and, and what Mr. Skinner wants to do, and I want to have a leap of faith and just not go against my own and just believe you and, and jump into it. But the salary is really what I feel is a little bit too high. If, if we need to set the salary, that's, I want to reserve that for future negotiation. I will only approve the, the hours, but not the.
Thank you. Mr. Bahu?
So a couple of things. The first would be, this is a 500, 500-hour position for the whole calendar year or for half the calendar year, or any part of half the calendar year. Now, I believe, of course, and, you know, we've heard you say that, Mr. Mayor, that this is something that could be an issue if we use too many hours up early. Therefore, I think to go ahead and know that we could have the consultant for the full 12 months, knowing that the biggest, the most amount of hours that he can work is 500 hours, is the way to go, simply because we don't know what our new transportation director looks like July 1st, August 1st, September 1st. He may need coaching, he or she may need coaching, and I think that's important. Secondly, I heard the consult rate, and I think maybe that we should sort of come up with a rate right here if we can. $200 an hour at 500 hours seems to be like $100,000. I don't know that Mr. Dakota makes much more than $100,000, you know, in the full, you know, 40 hour, 40 weeks or 48 weeks that he works annually. So I would err on the side of caution and make the recommendation that, you know, maybe we pay $100 an hour for up to 500 hours of, of work from Mr. Dakota and essentially know that he can work for us up until December 31st. And if he only uses 400 of those hours, that's great. Now we know how much that we've paid and how much we're on the hook for and we're not, and we're not excessively paying someone and then sort of ending up behind the eight ball to maybe pay a new transportation director as well. We have to be very understanding to the amount of pay that we offer across the whole district. And I'm sure $100 an hour would be very suitable for what we're asking for.
Dr. Hall?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought a retiree, they had two limits on it. They had hours and also the amount of money that they could make. Am I, am I right on that? I mean, I don't, I certainly don't think $100,000 is what a retiree could make. I mean, if that's, if that's the case, I think I'd probably go back working again, $100,000. That's a.
So what I mean.
I, I think something's off on that equation, to tell you the truth. But maybe Dr. Hall has the answer over here.
Dr. Hall?
So generally, retirees, the first year of retirement is a quote unquote "magic year," where there isn't a limitation on your combined.
Magic year?
That's what they call it at the, you know, the retirement consultants. It doesn't apply to elected city councilors in this situation. But a typical retiree, you would take your retirement income, you'd combine it with what your old position is making. And those Y and Z can equal 120% of what the incumbent in your old position is currently making. So that's the general rule. From discussions, that doesn't necessarily apply to this situation because there are special rules associated with elected government officials. What I would request, and I can appreciate, you know, your concern about the salary, like in looking at this, we plan to stay within the budgeted amount for transportation personnel. So I don't know if you all would consider, you know, as long as we can do that, going up to $150 per hour. I don't, in looking at it, I don't see the size of this district with the type of consultants that are qualified for it, that 100 would make it reasonable. For example, he's not going to be an employee anymore. He's going to be paying self-employment taxes and have costs of operation. And that's all factored into what we need to do to attempt to make this work till June. So I just ask that you consider that, that we could go up to $150 per hour if we stay within the budgeted amount that's allocated for transportation personnel till June 30th.
Yeah, I, I mean, I appreciate that. But what I think one of my colleagues mentioned, you know, it'd be nice to take that kind of money, we're talking $100,000 or $150,000, whatever it may be, and to sink that into a full-time person. And, you know, if, if we're going to be, if we're going to have tight, if we're tight for money, I mean, it just seems like the logical thing, if at all possible. And again, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the answer is, to tell you the truth. But it, to me, to pay out $150,000 or $125,000 a part-time, that doesn't, I don't think it makes a lot of sense. You know, we advertise, did you say we, we have somebody, how many do we have?
Superintendent?
That, that, how many, through you to, to the superintendent, how many people have we interviewed? Are we going to interview at this point?
So, but I said, the position is posted and we're attracting applicants. I don't know right this minute how many applicants. I also don't know if those applicants are sort of, you know, worthy, what sort of caliber of applicants they are. We're actively seeking a replacement for Mr. Dakota.
How long would it take to find out whether those applicants had, had validity for this job or not?
As soon as the posting is closed, but a day at most.
Oh, and when is it close?
Dr. Hall?
It's closing, right, approximately. Right now, I started reviewing the applications today. It closed the 29th, Ms. Arti.
So if I may, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Lay that was seconded. I think we should vote on that first and then move forward with any more discussion. So.
What's the motion again?
My clerk.
Mr. Lay, I believe this is it. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Approval of the temporary position for the transportation director with a deadline of the calendar year with the salary still to be negotiated?
That was seconded. So roll call, please.
Call, excuse.
Oh, sorry.
Could I amend that?
Bahu?
Could, could we negotiate that salary right now, that recommendation right now? Or just remove that to be negotiated part off of that motion?
You'd have to ask the maker of the motion.
Mr. Lay, what I'm, you know, hearing from Mr. Hall is he's recommending $150 an hour. And I don't know that, that would be fair to the school district or the students. So I would like to, you know, take away that negotiable part and then maybe discuss that negotiating, discuss that rate that we would like to go to, you know, and, you know, in this meeting.
So we negotiate the rates differently?
Right after we approve this, right after.
Separately.
This motion. Is that fair?
I thought that's.
Your permission?
So that's what the motion is, right? The motion is only approve the hours and not the race, the rate?
Yes. So with the salary still to be negotiated. So I can strike salary still to be negotiated, and then someone can put a new motion in about the salary.
May I ask a question to the HR and our attorney? Do we have, is that not purview to set a rate as a committee or does that come from the superintendent's office?
Dr. Hall?
Yes, the committee can set parameters on that.
Mary, I don't think it'd make any difference whether you leave it there or, or remove it.
I totally agree, but I've just, I wrote it down the way you said it. So if you don't care about the other part, I'll strike it.
Okay.
So you would like me to strike that last part?
Okay.
Okay. Roll call?
Any more, any more comments on, on this before we do a roll call?
So right now, we're just voting on approval of the temporary position for transportation director with a deadline of the calendar, calendar year.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Arti?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Mayor Rourke?
No.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Five yeas, one nay, one absent. Approved.
So I guess next up, we got to establish the salary. Mr. Bahu?
I'm trying to understand maybe what Mr. Dakota makes, our transportation director. Do you, might you have that number? Ms. Turner?
Ms. Turner?
It's, it's approximately $125,000, but I want to have Ms. Turner validate that. The committee, I think, raised it within the last year.
Okay, okay. That's good information. Now, I'm under the understanding that Mr. Dakota probably works about 48 hour, 48 weeks a year? Is that correct? From August 1st to essentially June 30th?
He works full-time, sir, you know, and I, I think beyond the regular work hours from my experience.
Okay. So, so based on my simple calculations, I used to run a convenience store, I'm a bean counter. I'm looking at Mr. Dakota working approximately 45 hours a week times 48 weeks a year, which brings it to about 2,100 hours annually. We're looking, if you bring the 2,100 hours and you divide it by $125,000, you're getting to be $65 per hour. So with that being the case, I would recommend, you know, I hear you, Mr. Hall, you know, to pay a consultant, you know, what a consultant rate is. I would like to stay on that low end, and I think $100 per hour would be sufficient, which would essentially get him to approximately three-eighths of his annual salary and working less than one quarter of his, of that time. So that would be my recommendation. I don't know what my other committee members think, but that's just my thought.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one clarification. Is it okay for us to, to discuss salary in an open, like, meeting like this, or?
Go ahead.
All right, then.
So first, we need a second on Mr. Bahu's motion.
I will second.
Okay.
For, for the purpose of discussion.
Discussion, okay. So if, you know, I'll say it from, from here again, I think, you know, we are approaching very dangerous ground. If this doesn't work out and we lose Mr. Dakota, there's going to be people here every other Wednesday yelling, screaming at us for transportation. I thought that, which is why I voted no on the last motion, is because I thought the way it was written gave us leeway to hopefully keep Mr. Dakota here. And as I said before, nobody has an issue with his job performance and what he has done for the students and parents of the City of Lowell, but if we want to go and try to change that, that's up to the body. But respectfully, I'll be voting against the motion on the floor now. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I guess, my concern is that, I think, as I said earlier, it sets a bad precedent, and I also don't feel comfortable negotiating a salary in this kind of a public forum. I think that if Dr. Hall wants to have a conversation and then come back to us with a recommendation, and certainly, again, I know it probably seems like empty words, I have seen up close the work ethic and the work he's done for the district, and it's not about that for me, but we are, we have to be fiscally responsible. We have so many needs in this city, and for one person to be getting, you know, whatever you get as your retirement, eighty percent of your salary or whatever it is, and then some huge consultant fee on top of that, it just causes pause. I, I don't care how hard you worked or how, what you did, it's not about that for me. So, you know, when we start talking about these consultant fees on top of the retiree piece, I just feel like, and with all due respect to Mr. Bahu, I think that you've come up with a reasonable response to this, not knowing exactly how much, but I personally would feel more comfortable if we could just give Dr. Hall an opportunity to speak with, I mean, out of respect for him and the work he's done for the district, to the employee, and see what he's asking for, is it fair, is it reasonable, and then come to it from that perspective. I, I, that's just where my mind's at right now with it. I, I think that there's a lot of pieces to it, definitely.
You know, and it is a very odd situation of a person being elected and having to go through a process of doing the right thing, like going to the state ethics to find out what, you know, the, the variables are and the barriers to doing both jobs. You know, and I'll say what I said last night at the council meeting, you know, I, I think the City of Lowell right now needs Mr. Dakota much more than he needs the city. So I think, you know, by agreeing to be a consultant, I think it's all a benefit, but I'll, I'll leave it at that. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, just, just very quickly, I think, and I, and I agree with my colleague, Ms. Doherty, it is a little uncomfortable to be discussing the monies in, in a forum like this. So I think the suggestion of, of Dr. Hall, sitting down with him and, and hashing something out, and then coming back to the body with a number, I think probably makes a little bit more sense.
Would you resist the motion?
Because at that particular time, yeah, I think that might be the more appropriate way to go.
Mr. Bahu?
I just want to say I agree with Ms. Doherty and Mr. Conway. I think, I'm sure Mr. Hall could have a nice discussion with Mr. Dakota and move things forward and then bring it forward to us in the next meeting.
So you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Great, okay. So could we, I don't think there's a need to vote on anything. We voted for the calendar year and we'll hear hopefully from Mr. Hall very soon. Thank you, all right.
I guess what my request is, am I allowed to go forward with bringing Mr. Dakota on to a system immediately, which is what I would want to do, and pay him a reasonable rate if the school committee then disagrees? You could then put a limitation on it going forward, is that reasonable?
I think what it says here, if I may, you want to stay within the budget of the department, correct?
Yes.
I'm sure you'll do that, and if not, you'll have bigger problems than Mr. Dakota, so, right, okay. All right, everything sound good? Moving on, 8.2, permission to post a job. There's a motion to approve the behavioral health specialist. Again, a motion to approve by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Mr. Lee, roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr.? Excuse me?
This is, yeah, this is the behavioral health specialist position?
It's the behavioral health specialist.
Right, 8.2. Absolutely, Ms. Doherty?
Through you to the superintendent, this is an updated job description. Can you tell me what's changed from the previous one?
Dr. Hall, please.
From what I'm told from the special ed department, Ms. Doherty, it, it corrects to just call it behavior specialist instead of behavior modification specialist. So it's a correction to that regard.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Mia Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent.
That's, I don't, 8.3, budget transfer. There's a motion to approve a budget transfer of four hundred and six thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. A motion to approve by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Lee. Questions, comments? Mr. Bahu?
I have some comments. Let me ask, when does our calendar year end? Is it, to my knowledge, June 30th, 2023? Fiscal, fiscal year? Okay, now, I'm looking at a lot of these invoices, and I'm seeing many of them, something that's stated here is that these bills were sent us, the invoices were sent to us after July 1st, 2023. Is that correct?
We're actually looking at, this is a different.
We're on 8.3, Mr. Bahu?
Oh, okay, so, the budget transfer of 292,000 dollars?
Four hundred and six thousand.
Okay. Okay, then I, then I'd like to discuss that, I'd like to discuss that. And I'd like to discuss that, and I know we need to pass it because at the end of the day, we need to pay the people that gave us our services. What's important is that many of these invoices came in prior to June 2023. I'm looking at, you know, Tewksbury, Tewksbury Company came in February 28th, 2023, G and G Fitness of forty thousand dollars came in May of '23, School Specialty came in June of '22. I'm seeing Vector, I'm not sure exactly what Vector does, but we owed them 23,500 dollars. That came in June of '23. I'm seeing Lindsay's Catering came in January of 2022. I'm seeing a company called Cartwheel, they came in April of 2023. So there is many of these invoices, yes, please, Ms. Turner.
So what I could do, if it would make it better for you before vote, you know, how we did discuss this previously, but what I could do, I didn't prepare that memo, I could go back and make sure, get an explanation of what happened, because I can give examples for each individual right now, or I could put it in a memo form. Cartwheel, for instance, Cartwheel was a match type of grant where they, if we provided telehealth services to our students, that the company would match us, so we would get free money to provide telehealth services. Because of the contract, we, you know, we have problems with delays with the city, we, we're sharing the law department with the rest of the city, right? So let's say if we have a law that requires us to transport a homeless student, or in this case, of special ed students or anything like that, we're obligated to provide the service, but we still have to go through the process with law, and it may take a time, take some time. So Cartwheel, being that the contract was approved after the date of services, we had, we started the services immediately as the, we were supposed to, it causes a bad bill, which, bad bill is a fake word, it's an inflammatory word, it's really a delayed bill. The bill comes in after, we have the money to pay all of this. So if you read MGL 44, section 64, it's saying that we need to go in front of the city council to, to request assistance with payment and to get two-thirds of the vote, right? In these particular cases, we're not bringing it forward to the city council to get them to pay for it, we've had the money all along, it's just there are delays. One example that just recently happened was a company that did the work, but because of the COVID delays with supply chain shortages, they did not, they were not able to complete the project until the following summer. So when they, we got the invoice, it was past the date of the fiscal year that the work occurred, you know what I mean? So each of these listed items that you see in front of you could have a different reason, and I could actually go through and write that beside each one so that you could see that instead of me going through the whole list right now.
Sure, and I think that's pretty important that we, that we understand that so that we can share that with the public, because realistically this, if I'm seeing dates of, you know, to 2022 and we're looking to make the payment on January of 2024, that's really not acceptable as us as a school district, because we're saying we're not good business partners, and secondly, as, as realistically, a, a good people that want to go ahead and pay their bills.
Absolutely.
So if you could share the information with us in detail, I think that that would be much better for our public and ourselves.
Just quick, sorry to interrupt, so this was under 7.2, which we had already voted on, approved and moved on from, so I don't know what you want to do here, you know.
It's been approved, we have to pay the bills, and I understand.
The agenda right now, Ms. Doherty, has been voted on by, by the body, approved, and we moved on. So I mean, I don't know how you want to go forward. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, I just want to speak for myself. I had a lot of questions, I'm glad that Mr. Bahu brought this up. When it came, when you were asking, I didn't recognize the title, certification of product services, because I thought of it as late bills, right? So I had no comment. You, you asked us and nobody had, and we kept going, and then when Mr. Bahu was about to question, I realized the questions had to do with this. I think that we need to follow up information about this, and we don't have to beat the dead horse, discuss it tonight, but I'd like to just throw in, as he's mentioned, information about some of these, that the bills came in a while ago. I would really like, Ms. Turner, if you could address what's changed. I mean, I have been paying attention and on this committee for over a decade, and the last few years, we have had so many of these late bills, so I don't know, are we doing something different, are we not sent, because some of these, let's use Public Consulting Group, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it came in after the year end, but yet they're on our permission to enter for tonight. So this is a group we've done business with, as the daily group, they provide our special education transportation. So any of these vendors that are long-term business partners, there should be no late bills from these people. So I don't know if internally our controls are not what they used to be, or if we're decentralizing it and schools are handling it, but whatever report you give to follow up with the information Mr. Bahu is asking, for, I'd like to understand, and I think we should get it in writing, give Ms. Turner an opportunity to go through all these, why we're having such a high number, 289, and, and maybe in the past it was that high, but I just don't remember it ever being like this. Thank you. And I apologize for not catching it first time around.
Ms. Turner?
First, I want to say that it did confuse me too. I think it's just a different word and then Minerva used in the past because I didn't realize what it was. Second, I want to let you know that, no, it's not that the internal controls have changed. As a matter of fact, the example that you just brought up, PCG, Frank Vicenti was in my office today about the PCG. I ask, because of the things that we faced when I first came in during that forensic year, and we were facing bad bills, whenever I face an, an obstacle that would cause the bad bill, I respond accordingly. So at that time, it was a lot of the schools had missing bills and they weren't submitting them. When we threatened and said they're going to be held accountable for that, then they started, we started not having many of those. But let's say PCG, we do a quarterly report with open purchase orders now so that people know what their purchase order is. And when we did it quarterly, Frank Vicenti reached out to PCG in April. They assured him that all the bills were paid, and then yet, then, after the summer, when the summer was here, they ended up with a bunch of invoices, and when he said, you told us that we didn't have anything open, and they said, we're sorry, we'll do a better job next year. So we're not, when we bring these forward to you, we're not doing it, we're not speaking on behalf of the vendor. If you chose not to, if you said, hey, you submitted it late, I would be fine with that. These are not, I'm not speaking on behalf of the vendor, I'm on your team. So if they, it's, but I still have to bring them forward when they do have a reason for submitting them late. There's a lot of companies that are still working remote, and then when we get a bill after we've asked for it, two months later, I still have to bring it forward to you to make sure that if they do a lawsuit, that you're, you knew it was coming, you know? But I will, I would love the opportunity to do my, use my own words and go through each of those so that you can understand what's going on.
Mr. Conway?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I apologize, I didn't realize that that was the section on it. Bad bills. How many times have I heard bad bills? On the school side and the city council side? And it seems as though every time we talk about it, there are no changes. And, you know, when we talk, the public itself, the public has to take care of their own bills, and it has to be on time. There's no excuses. If, if, if there's a problem, that's up to the homeowner. And here, I think, they should expect that we can get this right. There are many times on the floor and the city council, we've talked about bad bills, bad bills. So I made a motion on the city council side, and that was, and I thought this would solve the problem, that our CFO on the city side would reach out and meet with the CFO or representative on the school side. And how I worded that is the left hand would then know what the right hand was doing and vice versa. Also, if there was an issue or a problem, we could nip it in the bud. What happens? Six months later, nine months later, bad bills, bad bills, bad bills. So I said, what happened? Did we meet? And you know what the answer was? The answer was, we reached out to the school department, we had meetings, and I, what I did say was, and I didn't say like, for example, every week or every month or whatever, that was up to the school department and the city to make that decision. And they said, they invited the school department all the time to meet, but the school department never showed. Now, I thought that would be a great time that we could work as a partner and get the job done so we wouldn't have to go through the bad bills. But here we are again, bad bills, and a lot of talk back and forth, we can do this, and they happen here, and it's, and it's mumble jumbo, and I'll tell you, we have to fix this because we look silly, we look foolish, and I think we need to stop that, and I think we need to get it right, period. Because I hope that the school department or the city council, city has to worry about these bad bills again, and let's get this thing straight once and for all. And I would make my last suggestion is that when the city reaches out to meet with the school department, that we say yes, so we can fix this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes, I've taken, I've taken a couple of courses on school finance, and I understand where everything needs to catch up, and you can't really rely on a bad bill, things catch up as the year goes on. But one part that I heard you mention is that you didn't, you didn't do this memo?
Uh-uh.
So, but it's signed with your name and everything?
My name is, I, oh, I proved it, so I'm aware of what's on it, but I didn't, it wasn't my verbiage. My verbiage, I would have been more, like, I just would have put more to it. And you are absolutely correct, and just so you know, one thing I can provide in my mess, when I give you a backup documentation for the bad bills, I can also give you several emails of me reaching out to the city. Because guess what? I don't want to throw people into the bus, I want to build. I don't want to throw people into the bus, I want to build relationships. So I try to keep my tongue in check when I'm up here, so that I don't further alienate the city and the schools. But just so you know, there are a lot of times where our bad bills stem from, not even that it's a bad thing on the city end, they're only doing their job, but let's say the new city auditor. If the new city auditor won't pay a bill if it didn't have a contract, let's say, then of course, then we have a bad bill, because the IEP required us to have nursing services. If we provide the nursing services, but then the contract takes three months to go through, now the, the auditor may not pay that bill. So it's an inevitable bad bill. We have to follow the law to provide the kids services for homeless transportation. There's one right now called Helping Hands. We were talking about it today. It may be an additional delayed bill. And it's not because we in the business office are doing anything wrong, we don't hold the bills back, we have plenty of money. What it is, is that when they requested the contract in July, that it took until November for it to get approved. When they approved the contract in November, they approved it with the November date. So that's the type of thing that causes delayed bills, and like I said, that would give me the opportunity to show you in a memo, so you can read it thoroughly, where, where and how each of those bills went into that pile.
Ms., Mayor, comment, please, Mr. Mayor?
Thanks, sure.
I want to acknowledge the questions that the committee members have asked, and I think you, they warrant serious consideration and, and serious responses. Ms. Turner's offered to provide that detail, and we will put that on a motion for, as soon as we have that ready. In other words, I'm suggesting, if I may, that rather than explaining the bad bills one by one right now, that we put that report together and we can have further discussion on it when we get to that point.
Ms. Turner?
One more thing, just quickly, I just want to let you know that you're absolutely right, Councilor Conway, I'm, well, not counselor now, school committee member Conway. You're absolutely right, there have been numerous discussions, and I think that you'll remember, hopefully, that never did I say this was it. Each time, I have said it, they are inevitable. I have multiple presentations from over the time. When Connie Martin requested a motion on bad bills, and to make sure that I bring them forward to you, when she did that, I responded then. I responded again with a thirty-page presentation that probably drove you crazy, when I was explaining what is a bad bill? Why do we have them? How do we resolve them? And what we're going to do going forward? So I brought that forward, and I said, again, I said it at the school committee meeting and for the city council, at the city council meetings. They are inevitable. I never said that we're going to stop now. And by the way, as far as why they've gone up the last couple of years, we just went through a pandemic where a lot of people were not working in their offices. So when they're not working in their offices, I get a delayed bill. I get a bill that, that may not arrive for three months. So these are the type of things that I can put into my presentation for you so that you can see where the different times I've said these things, so that you understand, it's not like we're sitting here saying that they're going to stop. No, this is not all-inclusive. If someone doesn't send a bill, and they send it after the fact, the only thing we can do is choose not to pay them.
Mr. Bahu?
Thank you for that, Ms. Turner. I, I look forward to, you know, the work that you put into this, to share with us. You know, the one thing is, you know, that I look at realistically, is that a lot of time and effort needs to go into that. And I would rather see you progressing in your job and developing a budget for next year and being prepared in that way, rather than do all this work going backwards. So to me, it's really important that we pay, and a lot of these bills were a thousand, two thousand, four thousand dollars. They weren't an awful lot of money, but they come in a package that has forty or fifty pages to it, with dates that are well before, you know, June thirtieth. So I'd rather reduce your work so that we can go ahead and assist you in progressing our school district forward.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think maybe what we should, I'd like to make a suggestion and a motion, that we take this and put this into a, a subcommittee, so we can analyze it step by step on exactly what's going on.
You have a great idea, Mr. Conway.
I think that might be the appropriate.
Seconded by Ms. Doherty. Finance, look me up, I'll try to get that out as soon as possible, hopefully beginning next week.
And except we don't know who the members of the subcommittee is.
Try to get that out as soon as I can next week. I thought it was delayed, so.
And also, may I, may I make one small suggestion? Instead of calling it a bad bill, it sounds so bad, can we just call it a delay bill?
Right.
Thank you.
All right, back to the agenda right on, on the floor. Yes, budget transfer, I'll try it again. It was already read, we're just looking for approval for four hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents by?
You already have that.
Ms. Doherty?
Mr. Conway.
Mr. Conway? Roll call.
Yep. Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Eight point four, chronic absences, supplemental appropriation, need a motion to accept or expend for ten thousand dollars by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Comments? If not, roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Six shades, approved.
Convention, conference requests, we have three of them. We're going to bundle them all together. Nine point one, overnight request, Lowell High School, MIA, New England Championship in Providence, Rhode Island. Nine point two, overnight request, Lowell High School, MSSASA Conference in Hyannis, if that's in the spring, I'd like to attend. And nine point three, overnight request, Lowell High School, Air Force Junior ROTC in Dayton, Ohio. For a motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mia Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent.
Ms. Doherty?
Just quickly, we had, at our last meeting, we had a motion to invite Glenn Kuchar, the executive director of the Mass Association of School Committees, to present to us for a search for a permanent superintendent, which of course, I'm hoping Mr. Skinner will be in that mix. I'm wondering if we have an update? Did anyone reach out to Mr. Kuchar? Has he made a commitment to come to the committee? And if so, when is that? Thank you.
I reached out to him the next day. Ms. Doherty, he said to wait after this meeting and then to call him.